Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to open this meeting and call it to order. We're a little late, but we were in a previous meeting and it ran over a little longer. Let's have a roll call, please. All right, then Mr. Smith will lead our invocation. Mr. Gash will lead us in pledge, please. Stand, please.
Last prayer. Dear Father, we thank you that we are able to gather here this afternoon. We pray that you will give us divine wisdom to help lead our people in the right direction. Be with each one present. And dear Father, we know that we that till the land needs a little rain. And dear Father, if you can see it in your power, please send us some rain that we need. Be with it. Give us grandest wisdom and understanding. These things we ask for in your name. Amen.
Let's face the flag, please.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe there's been a request for an addition to the agenda. Mr. Manager, is that correct?
Yes, one thing we'd left off, public addresses to the board that needs to come after item number seven, between seven and eight, between presentation and items to report.
And I would like to request that we have a closed session if that will work. Madam Attorney?
You may pursue it to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, three, to protect the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion, just a second.
Let's vote.
Next thing.
All right, Mr. Rhodes, I believe you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two public hearings for you tonight. The first is a second public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, and this is the housing development grant we spoke to you at your last meeting about. We now have a draft application that we'd like to submit, and I'll just briefly go through a few things concerning that. Again, as you recall, we had a public hearing also at your June 6 meeting. We've completed the application. We have a draft version now. We'll be seeking board approval to submit it to North Carolina Division of Community Investment Assistance. And if you recall, this is a little bit different format or design than we've had for most of our community development projects. We're looking to use money from the state to purchase vacant lots where we can work with the Grift and Mission Ministries Group to build replacement homes or homes for first-time homebuyers. This will be funded by another partner, USDA Rural Development, to provide funding for the materials for these particular homes. So a very collaborative effort in using a number of resources. We're seeking funding from this particular grant at the level of $150,000. We're looking at purchasing close to six lots. Hopefully, that will get us six lots along with this. It's also some housing counseling services as well as administrative services. And again, the purpose of the second one is to gain approval for submission of this particular application by the end of this week on June 24. Briefly, the project schedule. Again, the application goes in this week, looking for grant award by September, clearing the conditions later in the year, and looking at acquisition and also counseling services, initiating in early 2012. And the closeout would be in mid-year July of 2013. Our recommendation for the night after the public hearing is to hold, first of course, to hold the public hearing and then to authorize the chairman to sign all the necessary forms that go along with the application. With that, Mr. Chairman, public hearings.
All right, I declare the public hearing open. Anyone signed up for that, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, no, not this time.
All right. Are there any present that desire to speak that have not had an opportunity to sign up? If not, yes ma'am, is it pertaining to this matter here?
Yes, it is.
All right.
I represent the first-time homebuyers that are in tax problems. And what I'd like to see is there's a possibility that some of this money could be used to save houses that are in harm's way. If we are using federal funds, then we have a mandate to try to save the federally funded homes that are already on the ground. So what I would like for this gentleman to check into, because it's done in Virginia, it's done in other places, what I'd like for you to check into is, is there a possibility that a portion of this money or even some additional money could come to save houses that are already on the ground in harm's way of tax foreclosure? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We're looking at anyone else. If not, I declare the public hearing closed. And I believe you want a motion for the second public hearing, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, sir.
In discussion? Not, let's vote. All right, Mr. Rhodes?
Second public hearing for tonight deals with the rezoning request, and this is from Baldwin and Associates. This is to rezone 2.79 acres of land on the western side of Portertown Road, and it's owned by Advanced Fence Company and also Julian Perkins, the two separate tracks. The request is to change the zoning from rural residential to general commercial conditional district. And again, with conditional district rezonings, there can be mutually agreed upon conditions that are attached. In this particular case, with a conditional district rezoning, you also are made aware of the type of use that's being proposed there. In this case, there are two uses, one being a self-storage facility, the other being a warehouse facility. To orient you on the location of this property, this is located on Portertown Road. This is the intersection of Eastern Pines Road and Portertown. This being the location of Eastern Pines Water Corporation and also the fire department right here. So just up and around the corner, this is the area we're looking at, about 2.8 acres. Some other uses, land uses in this particular area, you can see for the most part, those areas in the kind of tan color here are all residential uses. A couple of different subdivisions just to the opposite side of the road, Eagle Chase being one of those subdivisions, and several older lots along Portertown Road, road frontage lots along this area. There's also a church up at the intersection that I just mentioned, as well as a commercial building there. The area as far as the land use plan is concerned is in the rural commercial/crossroads community designation, and this does allow for certain types of limited commercial uses that are appropriate in these particular areas. With that, with the general commercial district as far as zoning is concerned, this allows for a wide range of commercial activities. And as I mentioned, this is a conditional district rezoning, so it is specific to self-storage and to a warehouse facility. And as I've mentioned previously, the conditional district rezoning also allows for specific conditions to be allowed, to be added on to the request. This is the property in question. Again, Portertown Road is to the right side of the screen, and this is the property in question, about 2.8 acres. It's bounded in the red dash line. The area in red is for the self-storage. The area in blue is the warehouse facility. And the area back in the far corner is actually a stormwater pond, and that is excluded from this particular rezoning request. Also, there is a certain amount of screening that is required. This is shown in the green here, all the way around the boundary. And you'll see in a minute that the planning board also has requested additional screening. As far as the recommendations, there is some interpretation that is required with the land use plan. There's a difference of opinion as far as the planning staff is concerned with the planning board. The planning board has reviewed this, and at its May meeting voted six to two to recommend approval of the request. And the board with that recommendation also offered some additional conditions. Some of the conditions were already as part of this plan, and you'll see those on the screen now. All the lights on the mini storage shall be mounted on walls of the unit, and no light shall be placed on the rear of the storage along the perimeter of the property. The height limitation of 10 feet on the structures, a security gate being required, Leland Cypress trees shown on the plan shall be minimum 10 feet in height. No outside storage is permitted, and proposed screening is to be extended to the front of the property. And you can see on this revised map, the areas that are in question here, these are the additional screening areas that the planning board has proposed. As I mentioned, the planning staff has not been in concurrence with this request. We're recommending denial, and primarily because of the surrounding residential uses in this area and the size and the intensity of this type of commercial operation in this area. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, we're recommending moving forward with the public hearing and moving forward also with the action on this request tonight.
Thank you, sir. We will now declare the public hearing open. Mr. Manager, or anyone sign up to discuss this?
Yes, sir. We have one person, Mike Baldwin, at this time, to come forward.
Mr. Chairman, we also have additional things that have been coming in over the last couple of days, and I believe the engineer may be alluding to some of these, so these handouts are being passed around as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Mike Baldwin. I represent Advanced Fence Company, who is Mark and Scott Tyrone. They've lived in Greenville all of their life, except Mark, he missed about three years in Pitt County before he got the chance to move here. I also represent Julian Perkins, who Advanced Kent Fence Company has this land, the back piece, under contract with. Before we get started, I'd like to give y'all some handouts, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, thank you again. This is the comprehensive land use plan that was adopted, as I've highlighted, April 15, 2002, by this board or other members of this board. You'll go over to the third page, Section 3, Future Land Use Plan Map. About halfway down, I've got highlighted in yellow, Rural Commercial Crossroad Community. I'm gonna give everybody, if anybody's not caught up with me, please slow me down, because I'll get ahead of myself if I'm not careful. All right, go to page 3.2 if you would. Rural Commercial Crossroad Community. Limited service land uses that are appropriate to rural crossroads development in a prevailing rural agricultural content. Mix of appropriate land uses, including residential, public institution, and limited commercial and light industrial. Then I'd like for you to flip to the last page. This is an inset on your land use plan that shows this request drawn out almost exactly within the boundaries of where the dash line is for the Rural Commercial Crossroad Community. All right. Okay, now if we can go to the second handout I gave you. If you'll just take the front sheet that I paper clipped and just pull it off to a side for a minute, everything else is bound together. In this request, the one good thing about a conditional use rezoning request, it lets the petitioner and the planning board and the Board of Commissioners offer things up that make rezonings more palatable in different areas. My client, Mark and Scott Tyrone, have been exceptional to work with as far as my recommendations to what I think would be an appropriate use and appropriate blend with what's out there. Mini storage in residential areas is not uncommon. You've got a mini storage complex that abuts Valley Land and Subdivision, some very high-value homes. You've got a mini storage complex in Simpson, as you go out Blackjack Simpson Road. You've got Stallings Mini Storage, which is right next to a residence. You've got a mini storage that y'all previously approved, with the Board of Commissioners previously approved, right across from Wheaton Village on Ivy Road for mini storage. You have a mini storage complex right in the midst of a small subdivision, right across from D.H. Conley. You have Wintergreen Mini Storage right on Toll Road. So with that, we're not setting any new trend here. What I'd like you to do is kind of follow along with me. In the first page that I asked you to take off the paper clip, everything in black is what was either offered or added at the May 18 planning board meeting. All right? First, all conditions and requirements shown on the conditional use rezoning map. Okay, the lighting. If you'll go to my stapled copy, you can see all the lights on the side of the buildings. No overhead lights will be out there, up high on 25-foot poles. They'll all be low intensity, mounted on the walls of the buildings. Exhibits A through 3 show that. The security gate, Exhibit B1, that'll be used to give the tenants a passcode and to keep just any and everybody out of the facility. And it'll also be keyed in with the operating hours that we're offering up tonight that are in red. Next picture, B2's a little picture of the passcode. All right. The mini storage facility I referenced to across from D.H. Conley. I stopped by the next-door neighbor's house one Saturday, and they were out in their yard, Mr. and Miss Odor. And I asked him, I said, "Do you have any problem living next to the mini storage?" Mr. Odor, excuse me, said, "Absolutely not." He liked the wall, the back wall of the building, and he said it acts as a fence. Miss Odor said, "The only thing that she has a problem with is every now and then a little bit of trash will blow in up under the fence into her yard." All right? The next one, and you can see, Exhibit C1, I've given you a picture of the Odor's house next to the mini storage. C2, I've given you a house on Toll Road that backs up the mini storage there across from D.H. Conley. Then I went to the residence beside Stallings Mini Storage, talked to Mr. Otis Little, introduced myself. I said, "Do you have any problem living beside a mini storage complex?" "Absolutely not." I've attached his tax card to this, as I did the Odor's. All right, here's a picture of his house on Exhibit D2, very nice house. There's another picture of his house, as you see the vehicle coming around the curve in the proximity to Mr. Stallings Mini Storage. All right, then I made one more trip. I went out to the mini storage facility out on the road, Blackjack Simpson Road, that Mr. Lynn Raymond Hardy owns. Miss Kimberly Umpflett lives right beside it. Her copy tax card is Exhibit E1. Knocked on the door, introduced myself, I said, "Miss Umpflett, do you have any problem living beside a mini storage?" She said, "Absolutely not, very quiet neighbor." All right, here's a copy of Exhibit E2 is a shot of the mini storage. You can see her house over to the left. Then Exhibit E3 is a closer shot of her house and the mini storage in the background. Exhibit F is a rezoning request I brought to you back in '06. It was approved by the planning board. It was approved by the Board of Commissioners. It was for mini storage right across from Wheaton Village. These homes range from $240,000 to $300,000. It was unanimously approved. All right, now we go to what the conditions that are going to be placed on the Advanced Fence Company, because we're asking that they be enclosed storage. No more open storage for them. No more restrooms, nothing but storage for them. So if you look at Exhibit H1, you see outside storage. That'll go in the warehouse that they've got. Exhibit H2 is, that's a shot, that's out of line, but that is a shot of the next-door neighbor's rear, the rear of her house, of Miss Ann Coward, very, very nice lady that I had the pleasure of meeting Friday night. I, one, is again fencing material outside of the facility. This is a good thing. Mark and Scott, they're gonna have to put it all up and put it inside their facility. All right, again, another shot facing Anthony and Vicky Boyd's property. The duplexes to the right of the property. We had a meeting with Anthony and Vicky. They were neutral in the situation. Again, material that's gonna go inside the building if this is approved. J1 is a shot, and it wasn't done to show Anthony's hog cooker and bush hog and boat trailer. What it was, was to show the Leland Cypress's that exist on the other side of the Boyd's property that prevent the house from seeing this mini storage if approved. And again, just a better shot showing you as it goes all the way down. All right? One thing I think is of special interest on this request, and you don't see it on many, is the tax card for Mark Tyrone, half-owner of Advanced Fence Company, would be half-owner of this mini storage if approved. He lives right across the street. That's Exhibit L. Exhibit L1 is the front of Mark's house, a very nice house, right across the street. So it's not a person on the other side of town doing to a neighborhood that he doesn't already live in. He believes in what he's doing. He believes it's a comparable use. He believes it's a quiet use, as well as I. All right, traffic issues came up in the planning board meeting, and it kind of caught me off my feet. So what I did Saturday, I picked the busiest day that I thought would be, mini storage would have. I sent one of my employees over to the mini storage facility in Winterville, just south of Sam's Club, took traffic counts there, then I sent him over and took traffic counts at Stallings today, for all day. Today, I sent one of my employees to East Gate Mini Storage, which is behind the Bojangles over there on 33, right across from St. Paul's Church, behind the Bojangles and the Cookout Restaurant. Surprisingly, let me tell you, and it wasn't surprisingly, because I knew these mini storage facilities didn't create a whole lot of traffic. Stallings Mini Storage, not counting the big units that he has in the back, has around 45,000 square feet. Trips on Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., took a 30-minute lunch, 15. All right, that's people, number of people coming into the facility. Of course, they had to leave the facility too, or they'd have got locked up, locked in. AAA security over in Winterville on Mill Road, as I explained earlier, Mill Drive. From 7:00 to 4:00, this employee took an hour lunch, he must have been hungry, 19 trips. All right, and then we went to East Gate Mini Storage today over on Mosley Drive, behind the Bojangles and behind the trade station, 23 trips. So what I submit to y'all is, we've got a very low-impact, low-traffic use. The Eastern Pines area is the fastest-growing and most-popular place to live in Greenville. I live in the Eastern Pines area. I live right behind, near Mr. Webb, and I have lots that abut the Julian Perkins property. Residents in the Eastern Pines area need an additional place to store their extra things that don't fit in their house or garage, like extra furniture, maybe from a deceased family member that they inherit, holiday decorations, outgrown child items waiting on another child, sporting goods, fishing gear. I kept a lot of my fishing gear at Mr. Stallings Mini Storage. All right? The request by Advanced Fence Company for conditional use rezoning could not be, in my opinion, a better fit, because it's quiet and it has low traffic. The property sits 155 feet off the road, is screened by metal walls, Cypress trees, and fencing, is bounded on the south by a single-family home, on the north by duplexes, on the east by Portertown Road, on the west by a proposed stormwater management pond and a nursery. As, again, the conditional use zoning allows the petitioner to place many conditions on her request, his or her request, as we've done. Some of the pros that I see of a mini storage, and I'm getting to the end, so I know I'm getting long-winded. Again, it's one of the most low-impact uses found in commercial, in the list of commercial uses. Mini storage is compatible with residential uses, as seen, it's all over town. I've already given you about half a dozen. You have no unsightly yards. You have no barking dogs. You have no light light parties. You have no dilapidated vehicles. You have no personalities of neighbors that you don't like, nor do you have fears of neighbors that might not like your personality. Extremely low traffic flow, Portertown Road, I got the counts from DOT this morning. Portertown Road does appear to be busy. It's at 33% of designed traffic. But even with that, we're talking about around, we're at 37,000 square feet. Most of these facilities that I gave you are much larger than that. So we're looking at about 12 to 15 trips a day. So we're looking at about 12 to 15 trips a day. The Advanced Fence Company, now I want to talk to you about the conditions we put on them. All right, James mentioned to you about the things that we had offered, and then, James, did you mention about no outside storage of vehicles? Okay, at the meeting, planning board meeting, they were asked, because they saw the storage facility on Worthington Road that has everything but the kitchen sink stored out there, right near the canal going toward, right before Cubby's going toward Winterville. We will not have any outside storage of trailers, vehicles, or boats, everything's internal. Operating hours, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., 10 days, seven days a week. Operating hours be regulated by a timer in the control pad that opens and closes the entry fence. And after talking with Ms. Cowan, excuse me, Coward, Friday night, no transfer, I asked Mark about this, no transfer truck deliveries are made before 10:00 a.m., and all trucks shall not be allowed to back into the advanced storage mini lot. Now they're gonna come in straight, because we're gonna have a route for them to come in and back out. And then additionally, and this is the last one I'd like to add, is an eight-foot-high wooden privacy fence is to construct, be constructed around the northern-western boundary of the Ann Coward lot, where it abuts a proposed rezoning request. I think my client has been very open to suggestions from me, very open to suggestions from comments we got from the Boyd's, and very open to suggestions just recently of information I gathered Friday night. With that said, I'd like you to support the land use plan that you adopted in 2002, where this area calls for a rural, commercial, crossroad community. I think not approving this request would not be supporting what y'all worked so hard for, what the citizens worked so hard for, planning staff, and the money spent to your consultant in preparing that plan. So I am finally gonna be quiet, and I will, I'll be glad to answer any questions that y'all might have concerning how the buildings are arranged, or just anything that you might have. I've given you a lot to look at.
Any questions from the board?
I just wanted to hear what the people that live out there say.
We're gonna get to that. One of your addendums or letters said that, you made these remarks, I think on a letter dated June the 20th.
Yes, sir.
You added to that, that 15 to 20 trips per day in your conversation.
In my conversation.
Yes. Did you mean, would those trips be by transfer trucks, which you talked about delivery here?
No, I talked to Mark and Scott, deliveries are made twice a week.
What kind of trucks are they?
Transfer trucks.
What you call, 18-wheelers?
Yes, sir.
Is the travel street going in right adjacent to a residential house?
It is.
Or within your property?
No, it's within our property.
I know, but it's adjacent to, the borderline, going by a house?
It's within 10 foot, and then we're putting the fence up.
That's where the 8-foot high, that you, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Any further questions? Melvin, Beth, and then Ethan?
Mr. Ball, looking at this on Exhibit B1, you mentioned that all the lighting were on the, on the side of the building, I think.
Yes, sir.
What is that light, it seemed to me there's a light above this tree area on your right-hand side on?
I see it in the trees.
Yes, sir.
We're not gonna have any of those.
So that light will be taken down?
No, this is not, this is just a, Mr. McGlaughorn, this is just a picture of another facility that.
Another site.
Just to illustrate, this was illustrating the gate, and they just happen to have a light.
Okay.
She, Ms. Ludi Moore that owns that, she does let some boats be stored out there.
You finished, Beth?
Have you shared the eight-foot-high wood privacy fence with Ms. Coward?
No, I was sharing that after our discussion, yes, ma'am, I did share that with her Friday night.
And what was her response?
She still doesn't like commercial next to her home place. Very sweet lady, we talked a long time, and we just, we, at the end of the discussion, we just agreed to disagree.
Thank you for your thorough survey on storage units in the County of Pitt. I knew where some of these were, but I really wasn't aware of where all the rest of them were. Do you know that when all of these storage units that you referred to were built? I think some, Stalin's was prior to the zoning, I don't know, and maybe a few others. Do you know, James?
Several of these were before zoning this place in this part of the county, yes.
That's what I thought, I thought most of them were, I don't.
Especially the one in front of Conley.
And the Stalin's, I think, as long as I can remember, there's been that sign going to the beach.
That's right.
And I think, okay, all right, that was, that's all my questions.
And that, Ms. Ward, is why I'm referring back to the land use plan that calls us out as a crossroads community.
No, but we were saying that everybody was happy with them there beside them, you know, talking to one person, but there was no zoning when they were put there.
Right, and that's why I went to see them, I just.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Ethan, and then Glenn, and then Mr. James.
What was on this site before, before this was planned?
Right now, there's some trees in the back that Mr. Perkins, Julian Perkins, when I walked back there, he had irrigation down, but it was, he was using it for a nursery. And the building, the building right now, as I know it, is being used for storage, obviously not all inside, Ms. Ethan.
What was it zoned when there was trees on it, agriculture?
Uh, if, real residential.
Anything else? All right, Glenn.
What remedy will the residents have if this is approved, if some of these conditions are broken?
I think you've got some pretty good watchdogs out there, Mr. Ward, and if the county does as good a job on zoning compliance as they do on sedimentation and erosion control issues, it'll be thorough.
That, Glenn. This is it, Mr. James.
I was one of those guys that worked hard for planning, because I wanted to make sure that we protect the homeowners.
Yes, sir.
That their value would not go down, and their quality of life where they live would stay up. We all look at things different, and what I'd like to know is, as I said, I or we represent the people. How many of you people are opposed to this, or you're gonna talk? And I know you have your reasons, of course, but, and then also, I want to support our planning department, and you know what their recommendation was, of course, pertaining to that. And we certainly don't want to hinder the growth of business, but at the same time, people who lived there, were living there a long time before the storage units had been suggested. I'm not so much opposed to the storage unit as I am the fences and warehouses. To me, that could create, and like our chairman said, that could create a big problem because of these 18-wheelers going in now. But I guess, Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have to say, but I think we need to listen to the people.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank y'all.
Now, do we have any others that desire to speak to this issue? If so, please come out and identify yourself. Yes, ma'am, come around.
Mr. Hammond, did you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Didn't you say that they had made plans to make a different entrance for trucks?
Well, right now, the 18-wheelers are backing in to the facility. With this plan here, the 18-wheelers will be pulling in the facility, be able to turn around and pull out of the facility, a safer, a safer situation, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, sir. Come around, please, ma'am, identify yourself, identify yourself, and.
Yes, my name is Ann Keter Coward.
Yes, Ms. Cow.
I thank you for letting me at least have the opportunity to say what I feel. My name is Ann Keter Coward, and I'm a third-generation porter. Thank you for saying that, Mr. James. People who've lived there a long time, people who've watched this community grow into a very thriving community, and, you know, I just have a lot of reservations, number one, about this business that's already there. I think a lot of Mark and Scott, and, but it really creates problems for people who have been in that area for a while. Rezoning, I don't really understand, I don't think. I was not aware that you could build a business out in the country, and then several years later have it rezoned to commercial. I thought that was getting the cart before the horse, and, you know, it should have been done otherwise. I was not aware, Mark called me and asked me if I owned a lot next door, and I told him no, but I gave him the number of my nephew, who lived in Richmond, Virginia. And he was, he had an interest in buying this lot, but he said that, you know, he would like to get in touch with Jerry, and he did. But Mark, to my recollection, never said to me, "I'm gonna build a business there." My mother lived on that lot until her demise in 1977, that was her home. My home was next door to my mom. It's a tight-knit community, and it's where I grew all the roots that I have, and it's where, that area has made me what I am today. And I just, I just have a real problem with seeing another building, another business landed there. I live alone, and I'll be closed in on the back of my lot, by part of it, and on the left side of my lot with that, with the fencing business. And, and as I understood it, the intention was, I talked to Mr. Baldwin, and the intention was to put a road sort of path, whatever you would say, into this, this mini storage area. Well, it's gonna be right down beside my bedroom window, and unfortunately, I don't have one of those five-acre plots, and so it creates a problem for a resident living next door. I am not here to cause any confusion with my neighbors, I love my neighbors, and I want to do what's right, but I also hope that you will consider where I'm coming from, because that has been my home forever, and, and I just, I just am really opposed to this new endeavor that they're taking on. I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate you making a favorable judgment for this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Deborah Barrington, and I also live in Portertown, I've been there about three years, and I too hate to see it become commercial and a residential, it's been a quiet, nice neighborhood, and I love living there, and I am against the warehouse and the storage buildings. Thank you.
My name is Danny Gonzalez, I built Eagle Chase, and to me, I've got one of the best neighbors behind me, which is Eastern Pines Water, but I've been trying to sell my house for three years, and the biggest complaint is, you back up to a commercial building. You know, I'm all about business for everybody, but also, that you might not know, but out on 43, there's a mini storage that was shut down, that's fixing to open up, that's got 120-some units, that's not even been open to the public yet, but I think it's gonna be open this week, and he's got plans to start building some more. So I don't want us to get mini storage poor in a great neighborhood like Portertown, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, thank you, sir. Anybody else? If not, Mr. Superintendent, oh, excuse me, come around.
I saw some other hands going up, sorry. I'm Jim Barrett, James Lee Barrett, live in 3220 Portertown Road. I found out about this at 4 o'clock today, so I'm not real well-prepared. A flyer came in my mailbox, apparently from a neighbor, encouraging me to come out and speak against having a commercial place in our neighborhood. I'm actually not even sure where this place is, my wife thinks it's right next door to us, we've not been contacted, but I want to go on record as opposing having a business going near, if not beside, my house.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Thought you raised your hand a while ago, which is, I said, "Ma'am, come on up."
My name is Jane Kimery, and I live in Wellington Ridge subdivision, and I'm a neighbor of Mark's, and I think Mark and Scott are great people. My husband and I moved there three years ago, and one of the reasons we like it is because it was nice and quiet. My husband works out of town, and I spend a lot of time alone, and so my greatest concern is security, and I'm strongly, I strongly oppose this. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Landon Jarman, I live, I own a house on, in Wellington Ridge, same place, and I'm opposed to this, we're having trouble with the land values, keep them up, and that's what we want to do, the house values. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Maxine LaCroy, and I live right next to Mark Tyrone, like literally right next to him, and I see the traffic, I hear the traffic, it's been there, we've been there five and a half years, almost six years. I think this would be great. We need a, you know, little mini storage, it's not huge, it's not out of control, it's just there behind his other businesses. His semis come in twice a week, my kids and I, I'm a single mom of four, we see the semis come in, there are other semis that go up and down that road that we are not opposed to. I don't think that this is going to cause any more additional traffic than what's already on that road, and I am all for supporting small business owners, I work for a small business owner, and right now, we need to support them in these economic times. So I am in favor of Mark and his brother building this unit. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? If not, Mr. Manager, I believe you tried to get my attention a while ago, did you have something you wanted to say?
You just had a question, Mike, you had said that hours were 7 to 7, but you submitted a letter to the board dated June the 15th, saying it would be 7 to 10, seven days a week, we're just trying to clarify the hours of operation. I'm not sure what James Rhodes has in the actual application itself.
Mr. Elliott, I apologize, I was probably so tired from talking, I missed, I missed quote. The hours are 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and that was recommended to us by one of the planning board members during that meeting.
If there's no other comments at this time, we will close the public hearing. Anything else from the manager or James?
Yes, sir.
It was a pleasure to board.
Mr. Chairman, I too was born and reared very close to this neighborhood around the corner on Fire Tower, I am very familiar with this neighborhood, it is a close-knit community, a very proud community, one that takes pride in their houses and in their area, and to me, it is strictly residential, that's what is around there, across the road in front of where this proposed project is, there's nothing, got houses over there, and I think the vacant land all around there will eventually be houses. So I do not think that building a commercial business there is consistent with the harmony of that area, therefore I recommend denial.
I second the motion, it's a motion.
And Mr. James, you seconded.
Seconded, yes.
Is there any discussion? If not, you ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I know that it would be denied.
Yes would be denied.
Yes would be denied.
Yes, yes, it's to deny.
All right, you got that. Anything else from that standpoint? If not, we appreciate each of you coming, and. If not, we appreciate each of you coming and giving your time. All right, Mr. Manager, what's next?
Okay, next you have under items for presentation.
Yeah, we give them a minute.
Okay, yes, under items for presentation, you have three items. First one is an Eagle Scout recognition, second is voter redistricting, and third is a resolution to honor the life of Dennison Dover DeeDee Garrett. I'd recommend that we move the resolution for Mr. Garrett to switch two and three in terms of order and take the two recognitions, Eagle Scout first, and the Garrett resolution second.
All right. We ready to go with the Eagle Scouts?
Yes, sir, if we can get down.
Do we need to move to accept the resolution?
Second.
Second, yes.
All right, let's vote.
Need to do again. She didn't take it off.
I don't believe it wants to work, does it?
Yeah, she had not taken off the.
Eugene and.
I know, but the yeses weren't off the screen.
All right. How many votes you got?
See if I voted yet, yeah.
I'd like to recognize one young man in Pitt County who has achieved, in the organization of the Boy Scouts of America, the rank of Eagle Scout. And if Christopher Ray Moore and his family will come forward, parents, and anybody else who may be here? In Pitt County, we have a rich tradition of the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts organizations operating in Pitt County. And nationally, only about two percent of all Boy Scouts actually go on to achieve the rank of Eagle. Pitt County is probably more three to four percent, double that. And we'd like to recognize you tonight, as we recognize all the Eagle Scouts of Pitt County who make this high achievement. We have a certificate of appreciation, and let me breathe this to you. This certificate of appreciation is awarded to Christopher Ray Moore for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. His project, he landscaped around the Rutan Building in Winterville, planting thirty trees and bushes. It's presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners this twentieth day of June, 2011, signed by our chairman, Mark W. Owens. Congratulations.
This is the third son that we've got. My husband's got to an eagle.
Oh, congratulations. That's wonderful.
Mr. Garrett's family that's present, will you please come around? Melvin, I believe you've been seated. Dave, you want to sit right now?
Please pardon me if I don't move. My mobility is not as good as it has been, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Ms. Garrett.
Commissioner McLawhorn, did you want to make any comments, or Chairman Owens, before we proceed?
I got some that I'm gonna follow, 'cause it'll take him an hour.
Not going, Mr. James. I'd just like to say that this is a great honor. Honorable DeeDee Garrett certainly was the first Black County Commissioner in Pitt County. He served as my friend and my mentor. He has done a lot for the county of Pitt, the state of North Carolina, and certainly for this nation. DeeDee Garrett, the honorable DeeDee Garrett will be missed, and we're certainly happy, I'm certainly happy that he's part of this resolution in honor of his lovely wife and his my good friend, Michael Garrett.
Along that same line, as I came to Greenville in sixty-three to practice law, Mr. Garrett was one of the first businessmen that came to my rescue. He's always been to me, Mr. Garrett. A few weeks ago, I think I talked to Ms. Garrett about him. We never would have thought at this time that we'd be where we are, but he's a very honorable man.
I'll proceed to read the resolution. It's entitled, Office of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, Greenville, North Carolina. Resolution honoring Dennison Dover DeeDee Garrett, Sr. Whereas Dennison Dover DeeDee Garrett, Sr. was born May sixth, nineteen fifteen, in Pitt County, and called to his eternal home on May twenty-eighth, 2011, at the age of ninety-six. And whereas, Mr. Garrett was a resident of Pitt County, North Carolina, who was graduated with the North Carolina College for Negroes, now North Carolina Central University. He had nearly completed his junior year when he enlisted in the Navy during World War II. When the war ended, he returned to college and graduated. And whereas, Mr. Garrett was Greenville's first black realtor and certified public accountant. He opened the community's first black-owned insurance agency. And whereas, in May nineteen sixty-five, DeeDee Garrett initiated the integration of the previously all-white neighborhood of Greenville Heights through the sale of a modest dwelling at eleven-twelve Ward Street. And whereas, in nineteen ninety-eight, Mr. Garrett became the first African-American elected to a countywide office in Pitt County when he won a seat on the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. He was also responsible for registering hundreds of black voters during the Civil Rights Movement. And whereas, Mr. Garrett led the Pitt County chapter of the NAACP for nearly twenty years. Where Mr. Garrett was a strong community activist and leader in Pitt County, some of his community affiliations include the following: first black candidate for Greenville's Board of Aldermen, member of the Pitt County NAACP, member of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, member of the AME Zion Church, member of the Omega Phi Phi Fraternity, and Mount Herman Lodge Number Thirty-five. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does by here honor Dennison Dover DeeDee Garrett and offers condolences to his remaining families and friends, adopted this twentieth day of June, 2011, signed by our chairman, Mark W. Owens, Jr., and attested by the clerk, Kimberly W. Hines.
Ms. Garrett?
My pleasure.
You're very gracious.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rhodes, or Mr. Manager, whichever one wants to proceed.
And if I may, I'd like to just call forward to the podium, Mr. Chairman Deborah Stagner, who is the attorney from Tharrington Smith.
Very good.
We are pleased to be with us this evening. We also welcome the members of the Board of Education who were able to join us for her presentation this evening. She's just gonna give you some brief remarks about redistricting, and then we'll turn it over to James Rhodes to unveil the first maps.
All right, will the Board of Education members stand, so those that are not aware of who you are will recognize you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for inviting me here tonight to speak to Ms. Gallagher, Tharrington Smith Law Firm in Raleigh. I joined the firm in two thousand and worked with Michael Kroll on redistricting after the two thousand census, and we represented a variety of local governments, counties, school boards, and cities and towns, preparing their redistricting plans and submissions under the Voting Rights Act for preclearance. As you will recall, perhaps, Mr. Kroll worked with the Pitt County Commissioners and Board of Education after the last census in two thousand in redistricting. And so now, ten years later, Michael has left for the school of government. I'm with Tharrington Smith still, and we're representing again local jurisdictions that need to embark upon the redistricting process. Another attorney at our firm, Adam Mitchell, is also working with me. And I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to work with Mr. Rhodes and the Commissioners and the Board of Education on this project. And I'll just give you a brief overview. I know that you have been briefed by Mr. Rhodes on some of this, and he's going to go into some detail. I'll give a brief highlight of the legal propositions, and then, if there are particular questions, and even after the map is shown, I can be available to answer those. As you'll know, any Board of Education, Board of County Commissioners, City Council, Town Council that elects its members by district must consider the need to redistrict following the federal census. Electoral districts must comply with the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, which means that the districts must each be substantially equal in population. And that's the constitutional requirement known as one person, one vote. Courts have generally accepted that substantial equality of population is achieved if the overall deviation from the ideal size, if you take a jurisdiction that has six districts and you divide that by the total population, you'll get the ideal if every district was exactly the same size. And the courts have said generally, for local governments, a rule of thumb of plus or minus ten percent overall is generally acceptable. North Carolina general statutes also govern the redistricting process for county commissioners and for local boards of education. One fifty-three A, twenty-two B is the state law that governs the process for county commissioners, and that requires that the board determine whether substantial inequality of population exists among the districts, and if so, to adopt new districts by resolution. The Board of Education has a similar statute, one fifteen C dash thirty-seven, and they also will adopt districts by resolution. And it's my understanding that the county is taking the lead on drawing maps, but that the idea is that the boards will have ultimately the same set of maps to look at and approve, although both boards do have the obligation and the authority to adopt their own set of maps. Because Pitt County is one of forty counties in North Carolina that is covered by Section Five of the Voting Rights Act, any redistricting plan, any change in the method or process of voting must be submitted for preclearance. And in this case, typically, it's submitted for preclearance to the Justice Department. It can also be accomplished through submission to the District Court for D.C., but typically, a jurisdiction submit to the Justice Department. The Justice Department has sixty days within which to review the proposed change and to either not object, to ask for additional information, or to interpose some objection to the plan. And so that's why this process needs to start a little bit early. Elections aren't until next year, but because of that sixty-day process, because of the time required, perhaps, to get public input, to get any thoughts from members of the community, to make sure that the plan is out there, that it's good, that everyone that is required to look at it has a chance to look at it and consider it, and because the plan has to be approved, including preclearance, before filing opens for candidates, which is in February of next year, that's why the process is starting now. For preclearance, the Justice Department will look at the benchmark, which are the current districts and the current population in the twenty-twelve census. So that's where the starting point is. The test for preclearance is whether or not the redistricting plan is retrogressive, which means whether or not it makes it harder for minority voters to vote or to elect the candidates of their choice. I have had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Rhodes, as well as your Assistant County Attorney, Lisa Overton, and the county, or the School Board Attorney, Rob Sonnenberg. We've talked about these principles, talked about the specifics of Pitt County's population, the growth, the principles for redistricting. And I believe you've heard from Mr. Rhodes already, but the current deviations for the districts in Pitt County are significantly out of balance. I talked about that ten percent rule, and right now, it looks like the districts are over thirty-five percent deviation totaled between the smallest and the largest. So that's a significant out of balance. Those districts are significantly out of balance, and so that's why you will be looking at a new map this evening to start the process. I'll be glad to answer any questions specifically about what I've said, or after Mr. Rhodes shows you the maps, when you have some, probably, context to put it in, I'll be here to answer any questions at that time.
Any questions at this time, or are we going to wait till James?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I misunderstood. You said Pitt County is one of three counties of what?
Pitt County is one of forty counties in North Carolina that is subject to Section Five of the Voting Rights Act, which means that any change in the method or process of elections has to be precleared by the Justice Department or by the District Court.
Mr. James? Thank you, ma'am. All right, back in when we first started, I'm only County Commissioner, went to D.C. and met with the people there, and they are kind of tough to deal with, if I may say so. But will we have to go through that procedure, or will it be done locally?
Well, what we would do, and I believe you may be referring to the change in the method of the election.
Yes, indeed, and we had to get their approval for the way we did our county commissioners.
Correct. The current voting method of the Pitt County Commissioners was a plan developed pursuant to a consent order, and then, any change in the method of election of how many districts you have, how many commissioners you have, would be subject to the court approval. This is different, this is simply taking the existing six districts and changing the size. So it has to go to the Justice Department for approval, but not to court.
See, we don't, we're not gonna have a problem, from what I understand, with the county commissioners. The problem is going to be, which we'll, you know, we have to fund money and so forth, is going to be with the Pitt County Board of Education, because they're the ones that's making the change, and that's what I was wondering with that.
Right. The process that I am working with both the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners on is just the boundaries of the districts.
So you're not working.
So we're not, the recent change in the number of board members should not affect this directly, because there will not be a change in the number of districts. There will still be six districts. And so, drawing the maps, this really is about drawing the maps and how much population is included in each district.
Yeah, I think we're on good, from what we went through at that particular time, we're on good footing, so to speak, in that respect. I think that they did a good job there.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of the Justice Department, typically, any citizen, if they are dislacking the process or whatever, can call the Justice Department, can they?
That's correct.
And request that. Okay, thank you very much.
Certainly.
Beth? I thought you were. Anyone else?
That's it.
All right, James?
And again, just to bring you up to date, since our last discussion, I believe it was back in April, when we broached the subject with the full board, on May second, the county attorney and myself did make a presentation before the full Board of Education. And at that time, the Board of Education also adopted a resolution, similar to what the Board of Commissioners has done, and decided to go through this process with you. So again, both groups will be going through at the same time. We have included, such as trying to keep the existing incumbents in the current districts, we've not only looked at the Board of Commissioners, but we've also looked at the current twelve members of the Board of Education. So just want to make that note. Tonight, we have one plan that we're gonna present to you. We'll go through that in detail. We want your input, of course, and if we need to go back to the drawing board. We've got a little bit of time, and we'll need to know from you if there's certain areas, certain concerns you have. And we'd also, if you're okay with what's presented tonight, move forward with setting some public meeting dates to gain additional public input. Tonight, I'm gonna go back through the working assumptions that you adopted as part of this process. We'll go through the changes to each one of the six individual districts, and we'll talk about the pertinent statistics for each one of those districts, and also, all the highlights for the draft map. First up, and Ms. Stagner's already mentioned this, we've got two primary working assumptions, and we're looking at Equal Protection Clause, and again, trying to get as close a number in each district as we can, and that's where this ten percent rule comes into play. We talked about this, we've already looked at our current numbers that came out with the public law data from census twenty-ten, and ideally, for each. the public law data from Census 2010, and ideally, for each one of our districts, we would have a total population of 28,025 people. And as we've shown you already in some previous discussions, we're far from that in several of the districts, some that have grown very fast over the last 10 years, some that have pretty much stayed at the current level. All in all, you get a deviation, as we've mentioned, of about 36%. That, of course, does not meet the 10% rule. So our other working assumptions besides the 10% rule is the retrogression portion, and this is where we'll be talking about the majority-minority districts. Currently, we have two districts, two numbered districts that are majority-minority, that's District 1 and District 2. We also, the combined districts, District 1 and District 2, which is the combination District of District A, all three of those in effect are majority-minority districts. We also have, as working assumptions, secondarily, the protection of the incumbents, and we've mapped out where all the current nine commissioners and 12 Board of Education members reside. We also want to make sure that these are compact districts, and we go back again and look at precinct lines, and trying to make sure that our new boundaries, where possible, do follow those precinct lines that will help aid in future elections. This map should look familiar to all of you. These are the current six districts, and again, starting in the middle with District 1, this is the core area of Greenville. Northern Pitt County is in District 2. District 3 is basically the NC 33 East Corridor. District 5 is primarily the Winterville and southeastern Greenville area. District 4, western Pitt County, and District 6, southern Pitt County, which includes both Aiden and Griffin. And now for our proposed Plan 1A. We'll start, again, with District 1. This is a majority-minority district. As you can see, the existing population, as far as compared to the suggested number of equal numbers throughout the six districts.
This is the voter population, eh, Jane?
No, sir, this is the total population.
This is total?
This is total population. So we have a strong deviation there, negative deviation. In effect, we need to add population to this district, and that's what we've gone about The proposal under District 1A brings the total up to about 27,068 folks, and that includes a deviation still negative, but we brought in a high-growth area into District 1 now. So that's one reason why we've kept this on the negative side. If you look at the demographic breakdown, white percentage, right at 39%, black percentage, a little bit better than 55.5%, and then there's the other races, and in this particular case, 5.5%. Okay, the changes to District 1. The area in red has been added to District 1, removed from District 4. This is the area bounded on the north by Stanton'sburg Road, goes across the railroad track that heads west toward Farmville, and then the western boundary line is Allen Road. So the area in red, again, has been added to District 1, taken away from District 4. That area, of course, includes such areas as the Lake Glimwood, or Lake Ellsworth area, high-growth area, a lot of new apartments. That area is included now in District 1.
Let me stop you a minute.
Yes, sir.
I've just been notified that I failed to give the Board of Education an opportunity to respond to the attorney's remarks a while ago. If you will, come back up, please, ma'am. Members of the Board of Education, you've got some questions of this young lady?
Yes, sir.
All right. Come around him. Come around, please, oh, here, ma'am. Excuse me, Jane, but we're good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
I'm Mary Williams, and I represent District 2, the north of the river. And my question was, it said, the changes in the method of election...
Come back up, that's, yes, ma'am.
Yes, the proposed changes to the method of election. Could you answer that question for me? If we still have six districts, we still have six districts?
Yes.
But there is a questionable change in the method of election. Can you explain yourself about that?
Well, because, because the voting district boundaries will change, that's required to be precleared by the Justice Department.
So...
So any, redistricting is one of those changes to elections that's required to be precleared. It's not changing the number of districts, but it is changing the boundary of the districts.
Explain the boundary. Explain that part.
The lines show...
I know what, you know, I know what the lines are. But see, I was saying, you were saying that there will be a change in the method of election that will be precleared by the Justice Department, but what changes will there be in the method of election?
The change is not in the method of election, it's in the district boundaries. The change is to the district boundaries, and that's what Mr. Rhodes is explaining right now, what the proposed maps are going to look like.
Okay, my next question would be, the over 35%, meaning that there's an imbalance or majority-minority?
The 35% means that the smallest district is 19% below the ideal size, and the largest district is 25, is that right? 16%, I'm sorry. I'm not doing math on my feet here. 16% above the ideal size. So if you add those together, that's a 35% overall deviation from the smallest to the largest. That's not directed at minority-majority district, the majority-minority district, that's directed at just the overall size of the districts. One is very much too small, one is very much too large, and there's other imbalance in between.
Okay, so when Mr. Rhodes explains the lines within the district, who's going to lose some people, and who's going to gain some people? So that's where we are now?
That's what he's doing right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Was there any other member of the school board that had a question? Mr. Peters, anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you, James. You may resign.
Yes, sir. So we have one area that has been removed, going to the second area that's been added to District 1 and removed from District 4. This is an area that is bounded by the railroad track, very close to the Walmart Shopping Center on the south side of Greenville Boulevard. Also, Landmark Street is one of the areas within here. This area is, does have a relatively high concentration of minorities, and again, this is what, this is our exercise that planning staff went through in developing the majority-minority districts. We looked at any areas contiguous to the existing boundaries that had high proportions of minorities. So here's one area, the Landmark Street area. District 1 needed additional population. It also needed a strong minority representation. This area qualified and has been brought from District 4 into District 1.
James, what is the street right there to the west?
This is Crestline Boulevard.
Thank you.
So that would be the boundary, the east side would be within District 1 as proposed, the west side would be remain, would remain within District 4.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, removed from District 1. These are areas moved from District 1 into District 2. So it's starting to bleed over into District 2 a little bit. Remember, District 2 also is low in population. As we're moving folks into that district, we also need to ensure that that, those areas have high concentration of minorities. This particular sliver that you'll see here is the area in West Greenville between 3rd Street and 5th Street, in between Memorial Drive and Green Street running west to east. So again, about two blocks deep, north-south, and several blocks running from Memorial Drive over to close to downtown Greenville. All that is moved from District 1 to District 2. Similarly, removed from District 1 and added to District 2 is the area where we're sitting right here tonight, that runs from Memorial Drive all the way out to Allen Road, and from north to south, 5th Street or Highway 43 to Stanton'sburg Road. So the area in red here has now been removed from District 1, added to District 2. Another area that's actually been removed from District 1, but this has been added back to District 4, and this is really a result of some changes to one census block by the Census Bureau last time. This area is the southwest corner of Memorial and Greenville Boulevard, by Barbara Honda, a lot of other commercial activities in there. However, the Census Bureau did add one block, a new development down Thomas Langston Road to this that had residential units included, primarily white people living in that area. We have removed that group and put it into District 4. And if you'll, again, just an oddball situation where there was a, we'll call it a dogleg, panhandle, whatever you want to call it, that runs down Thomas Langston Road that was added on to this census block, we've removed the whole census block, brought it into District 4. Finally, these are all the areas that have either been added to or taken away from District 1, and the end result, in the peach color here, is the new District 1. We added additional population, we maintained the majority-minority district, we followed precinct boundaries, like in West Greenville, where practical. This also is still a very compact district, and we've realigned with the census blocks. So that is District 1. District 2. Yes, Mr. James?
James, as I look at that, it goes to 5th Street, is that correct? That District 2 now will go all the way to 5th Street, back to the river?
That is correct.
And it goes, does it go through the first stoplight, or does it go through the second stoplight?
On Green Street, or you...
On 5th Street.
It goes from Memorial Drive on 5th Street all the way to Green Street downtown.
Down 3rd.
So it takes everything into those paternity homes and so forth, they're on the left?
Yes, sir.
And goes all the way down?
Goes right on downtown.
That whole section in there. But of course, a lot of people that don't, a lot of that area downtown, you know, they don't have voting down there. I mean, they just know one day business, so you're not covering bodies, so to speak. Okay, I understand it now.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Let's James first.
Yes, sir.
James, in 1998, when I first ran, District 1 was on the south side of the Tar River, and it ran from there, going south to Greenville Boulevard, and going east to the railroad track. And then, when you got Memorial Drive, it ran from Memorial down to Red Oak, including Oak Road and Red Oak. Then it came across Dickerson Avenue to Dickerson Avenue, and came back up with the residences and businesses on the south side of Dickerson, being in District Number 1, and the residences and all being on the north side in District 4, just like...
But, James, what concerns me is, you took all that area of minorities out of District 1, and you put them in District 2. And I thought you were looking, going to look out there and see it on 40, going down to Highway 43, going down by Bee's. You changed that philosophy entirely, didn't you?
Right now, this is the best we can bump up the majority-minority district percentages, and you can see District 1 still has a very high percentage black at over 55.5.
What does District 2 have?
Going right to it.
All right.
That was my segue into it.
Because, you know, you took that out of District 1 and put them in District 2, that whole section in there along the river that goes to Green Street. Of course, there's not many people that live there, if you get by that second stoplight, as you know. All right, go ahead.
District 2, and again, the existing district, as far as the percentage black, based off the new 2010 census numbers, were less than 50%. The proposal in this particular plan bumps the black percentage a little bit above 50%. And you can also see in this particular district, which is primarily north of the river, except some areas we've just talked about south of the river, also has a large, relatively large proportion of other population, over 10%. The white percentage is right around 39%.
But in other words, now, we, there are more, less minority booths by far than there was 10 years ago in that particular district, of 10 years ago.
Through, through the last 10 years, the minority population has been diluted in that area.
That's right, in that district, because it used to be, when I first ran, about 65. Now, it's about 50, that's all.
From 57 to 55, James.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So with this, we've already talked about the area that's been added to District 2 that's been removed from District 1, and that's the area between 5th and 3rd Street, and again, between Memorial and Green Street. Another area that we talked about, area where we're sitting right here tonight in the County Administrative Building, all the way out to Allen Road, Stanton'sburg Road, and bounded on Memorial and 5th Street as well. That large chunk has also been taken into District 2, again, to add population there with high percentages of minority populations. Another area that's been taking, has been added to District 2 and removed from District 4, is the area out near Bee's Barbecue Road at the intersection with Highway 43. And you can see the area in red here, it's been brought into that district. Overall, District 2, not a lot of changes, still the complete area north of the river, complete area north of the river, and then those minor changes south of the river to bring additional population into District 2.
Mr. James, what about Brighton Park and going down towards Ironwood? Is that District 2 or that District 4?
Brighton Park, help me with Brighton Park.
Brighton Park is if, if you come down Arlington and come out to 43, it'll be almost in front of you. Come down Arlington.
Dave, are you talking about to the left or to your right when you come out of Arlington to 5th Street extension? That's, that's the medical center over there, isn't it?
No. If you come right down 5th Street here, Mr. James, Mr. Owens, and you pass the hospital and the mid-school complex, and go down on your right, after you cross, after you cross where the Arlington intersection, Brighton Park subdivision is there on the right-hand side. It's in District 2 now, and...
And that will stay in District 2.
Okay.
None of that has changed in that area. If anything, we've added additional area on the south side of 5th Street or Highway 43 into District 2.
What concerns me, James, is that, you know, when you add additional areas, I'm concerned about the voting patterns of those districts. And, you know, it's one thing to add districts, and it's another thing, if those people added is not voting, as a history. And can we find out or determine the history of those districts, those areas, whether has been added to District 1 and/or District 2?
We've done a little research along those lines with Ms. Stagner's assistance. We've looked back at the elections data since the 2002 elections, and really for majority-minority purposes, to see what are the proportions, what are the percentage? If you've got, let's take District 2, it's very close to a 50% minority faces. If you've got, let's take District Two, it's very close to a fifty percent minority basis, the effective voting group, when folks go to the poll, is it at fifty percent, is it at sixty percent, or what? So, we've got some of those statistics now. Those will be available. That is also information that I believe Ms. Stagner has indicated would be instrumental as the Department of Justice looks further at the majority-minority district. So, yes, we've looked at some of that data already. What is really interesting, just one case in point, a new student housing complex right downtown Greenville, that happens to be in one of the majority-minority districts. For the most part, it's, it appears by the data that we've seen that most of the students aren't necessarily voting here. They're included in our population here in Pitt County, but don't necessarily vote here. So, a student, whether it's a dormitory, whether it's a student housing, private complex, can really alter or skew numbers if you just look at the overall population and not the voting age population. And in most cases, it increases when you remove mostly white students, the percentage of minorities actually is increased. So, that's the type of data we've seen as far as the election data since twenty, two thousand and two.
That answer your question, Melvin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, District Three, we're moving on around south of the river now. District Three, there's only been one change. It is a fairly large area geographically, but doesn't necessarily include that many people. Go back to the statistics here. The proposed population in this district is close to twenty-seven thousand. This is a fast-growing area on the east side of Greenville, so we've gone below the ideal number, and you can see some of these statistics there. This is not a majority-minority district. You can see the percentages here, white at, right at seventy-four percent, black at nineteen percent. The area that's been removed is the area, as you go down Four, NC Thirty-three East, the area past Chicade Creek, which includes all the area of, the town of Grimesland, all the way out to the Beaufort County line. That entire area is now proposed to be shifted to District Six. Again, District Six being a very rural area, this area of District Three seem to be more in line with that area. Also, Chicade Creek also serves as a precinct line, so another good reason why that boundary has been included there.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, Dr. Johnson, what you need?
Yes, sir, I've got several questions. Would you locate on the map Eastern Pines Rescue Fire?
I'm gonna have to get the larger map up for the detail. I will tell you, Dr. Johnson, if you look at the dark blue line here, none of the existing district has been changed, except for the area once you cross Chicade Creek. So, if you had that area in the Eastern Pines area previously, you still have it within District Three.
That's not the question I have in mind.
Okay.
And I can have a little bit better understanding if I see where Eastern Pines is located.
Eastern Pines is this little knob right here.
Wait a minute now.
That is the intersection right at Eastern Pines. See that?
No, I don't, I'm not sure where your marker is.
Marker is right at this knob right here.
Use one marker, not your glasses, that has two.
See, do you see the mouse moving now? You see the arrow moving?
No.
James, we should pencil or pen.
There it is.
See it there?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't see it.
Use a pencil or pen, at some point.
Right here, that knob right there.
That's Eastern Pines.
That is the northwest, northeast corner of Eastern Pines, and I'd be, or Portertown Road right there.
This map, it would just be to the left of that blue dot, I think.
There's some other factors involved here. What is the total number you're proposing to remove from District Three?
Total number removed would be right at, between thirteen and fourteen hundred people.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I hope that you're not planning to vote tonight, because I'm gonna need some more time to absorb what's being proposed here than it just at one sitting when I'm having trouble locating the, the heart of District Three.
I think your intent, Mr. Rhodes, is to get this on a suggested map and bring it back to us, so the asked questions he's got will be answered.
And we've got detailed maps here tonight, if he wants to get right down to the crossroads. Again, it's gonna be very hard to get this detail on the screens here, but we've got additional maps, larger than the ones that we've handed out, that you can get right down to the street level.
He didn't answer his question. His question, his statement was whether or not you were intending us to vote tonight.
No, no, sir.
And it would be premature, Mr. Chairman, to vote before the opportunity for public input and the different hearings, or the public meetings that James is hoping to set up this evening.
It's always been my philosophy.
This is just...
Chairman? Wait a minute, Dave, wait the time finishes.
For, for the record, Mr. Rhodes, the percentage of rural voters is not the factor in this District Three case. The factor is the large percentage of Republican voters, and I'm a Democrat. And I have difficulty with this proposal, because I know that that whole area that you're proposing to remove from my district is majority Democrat. I know that the Simpson area downtown is majority Republican. So, that's all right for the record, as I write down.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have not looked at that voting detail.
Would that even be legal?
You doggone tootin', it'd be legal.
Would that be legal to try to draw the districts based upon Republican, Democrat?
It's, it's not a factor that you have to ignore completely, but you cannot, there are cases that say you cannot gerrymander so as to exclude one party or the other. My understanding, that was not what, that was not among the data that they looked at in coming up with this initial plan.
However, we have to vote.
Certainly, certainly.
And the question that Mr. Garrison is bringing up is legality, and what I mentioned was not legal or illegal, right?
What you mentioned, oh...
Republican or Democrat.
The fact that that's a concern for you.
Yes.
Certainly not. It's not, certainly not illegal.
That's not illegal.
For you to have a concern about that. The point is...
It's not illegal for him to have a concern, but isn't it, would it be illegal to try to draw districts based upon party registration?
They're doing it all the time.
It's not that you, it's not that you cannot...
That's what they're doing now.
It's not prohibited to take party registration into account. What is prohibited would be to try to exclude a, a party on the basis, to, to draw districts so, to exclude a particular party and gerrymander them out of... I hope that answers the question.
You're fine, thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, James.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir, Dave, excuse me.
I want, have one observation I want to say to James. Mr. James, if I understood, you're right, Third Street now from Memorial Drive, you said it'll be put in District Two?
Yes, sir.
From there to Green Street, and from Green to Fifth? Well, that moves the line from south of the river, because First Street now is in District One, all the way down to Summit Street. Once you cross Summit, you go into Mr. Johnson's district, which is District Three.
You're thinking back to nineteen ninety. In two thousand, it was moved to Third Street.
That's true. Went to Third Street.
Now, we're going to Fifth Street.
Now, you're going back to Fifth Street, at the beginning.
So, we're dropping further south of the river.
South of the river is my district, yeah.
Yes, sir.
That helps your district, Dave.
But, he doesn't want to lose that area, I understand.
What James is saying, keeps you better numbers, if I read them correctly.
Yeah, I'm looking at him. But, Colonia Avenue and Fairfax, Fairfax is right on the river, and Colonia's the next street before you get to Third, going south. Fairfax is on the river, and then Colonia, and then Third. And you said that's been put in District Two? Well, Marwood still is in District Two, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, well, Third Street runs into Marwood, but it don't, the boundaries don't change until you cross Memorial, is that right?
That's correct.
So, you're taking Third?
From the old map.
Hmm?
On the old map, Marwood was already in District Two, and again, it stays that way.
Right. But, Third Street is in District One.
All right, that development, right on the other side of Marwood, where they're building the vet hospital, that stays in District Two, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, it goes to the branch. That's why I thought you were gonna go and make it out and leave this district alone, see?
This building right here, you say is in District what now, One or Four?
Going into District Two.
This district goes and that's a District Two?
Yes.
Needed additional population, needed additional...
Well, you got no population here.
But, it's this whole census block.
Oh, it did. We ought to look at this thing.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on.
I thought we were gonna do as less changing as we had to do, that's what I don't understand.
And that is...
You didn't even have to change District Two unless you wanted to, by the law, we were only five percent down, you can be ten percent.
Mr. Chairman?
So, I don't understand that.
Can we suspend interrogation, Mr. Rhodes, to a conclusion of the...
Yeah, you change one, you affect another one.
You know, I considered that, but then I said it's just as good to get it one time as it is another.
I know Glenn wants me to be quiet, he's told me that two times.
You know, there's a little conversation over here about that too, Gene. But, what James is trying to do is to give us an overview, and we're gonna come back later with more specifics, and along the line that Glenn was saying, these maps with specific streets and numbers, I'm sure James is open for any commissioner at any time to go view them.
Absolutely would recommend.
Thank you.
Okay. On the District Six, we've already talked about, this was a little low as far as population was concerned, negative six percent deviation. We've talked about the area removed from District Three, from Chicade Creek, heading eastward to the Beaufort County line, that has been shifted to District Six. Also, an area of Winterville, the south side of Winterville, to gain more population in District Six, it has been removed from District Five, following a precinct line, and dropped into District Six. And that's the area now south of Cooper Street, until you get to the railroad track in Winterville, then going up to Main Street, and all that area on the west side of the railroad track and along Main Street southward is now in District Six as proposed.
James, I believe Dr. Johnson's got one more question about something you just said.
Yes, sir. What I see you proposing is picking up some population for District Six. Well, you can pick up additional population for District Six, right where you just now mentioned, and you don't have to pick up Grimesland. Can you not?
Lot of different alternatives, and this is one that, again...
Say yes or no?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Anything else on that, Tom?
Not at the moment.
All right, we got you covered. Go ahead, James.
These are the two areas that are proposed to be shifted into District Six, from Districts Three and Five respectively, and here's your total area, again, south and east now, Pitt County, in District Six. Finally, District Four, very fast-growing area, we carved out a number of areas we've already talked about, brought into District One, also a small area into District Two. Those were the highly, high minority districts or census blocks that we converted over into other adjacent districts. In turn, this is one area we talked about that's been moved into, added or added to District One. This is an area that we talked about, that's also been removed from District Four, the Landmark Street area, near Greenville Boulevard, that's been removed from Four, added to One. The area at Bee's Barbecue Road, removed from District Four, added to Two. Again, a lot of extra population in District Four, and has been shifted to some other districts because of the minority district. The area here, as we went into detail earlier, with the change in the census block configuration, that area actually was removed from District One and added to District Four. This is the corner, Bob Hart, and Bob Barber Honda, some other areas in there with one residential area along Thomas Langston, going into District Four. Another substantial area that's been removed from District Five and added to District Four is the area to the west of the railroad track in Winterville, that runs all the way out to Frog Level Road. This is the area where you have some of your new elementary schools, such as Creekside. Also, South Central High School was a landmark, is in this district as well, along with several residential neighborhoods. So, from north to south, you can see from nine oh three to Davenport Road, and then hitting a section of Reedie Branch, that is shifted from District Five into District Four. And finally, that is your new configuration for District Four, fairly compact, changing some areas for majority-minority districts purposes, and also removing some area from District Five.
Yeah, let's let him get that and we'll be right with you, Dave. Did you finish your thought there, James?
Yes, sir, and that's the final configuration for District Five.
All right, now, Dave.
You said fairly compact District Four, you come cross, you come cross on the east side of Memorial Drive and, and pick up Landmark Street and say that is compact to District Four as it is now?
Landmark Street now is going into District One.
Right. But, but you said, if you come, if you come on the east side of Memorial, Memorial Drive with District Four, you are expanding the eastern side of the district.
Look at the map on the screen right now, and, and the light blue area here, right here where I have the mouse, the cursor going up and down, this is the eastern edge of District Four, it aligns with the railroad track. So, that is still a significant, significantly compact district for District Four. It's a large area there, we haven't run in between two roads. You mentioned your old district line, when it used to kind of be a bowtie effect down at the Memorial Drive and south Greenville Boulevard area, we've got a much more compact area now than we had those days.
It went down Memorial Drive to Greenville Boulevard and hung a left, and then it, the end of the district going eastward was the railroad track. And if you made a right, the end of the district was Dickerson Avenue, the, the east side of Dickerson Avenue. If I... If I go to Dixon Avenue down Memorial and make a right turn on Dixon and go by the Moose Lodge, and when I come by Star Hill Farms Development, Spring Forest, Spring Forest Drive and Lake Ellsworth, where you said has been put into District One now, all those are in District Four.
That's correct.
Well, going out Dixon until you got to Red Oak, the south side of Dixon Avenue was in District One.
Exactly right. And what we've done, we've closed in that area. That area, that whole block, has been removed from District Four, put into District One, and you've got a much more compact district for District One. You don't have that zigzag approach on the west side of District One any longer.
Right.
Is that that covered, James?
Yes, sir.
Let's get it, Mr. Gage.
Uh, James, let me make a couple of comments about District Five. That's the district, district that votes for me. And however you altered it is fine with me. I really don't get involved in whether you took out Democrats, Republicans, unaffiliated, independents, black, white. It doesn't make any difference to me, because when I campaign, I try to appeal to everyone, period. I never ask, well, you know, what party are you affiliated with, what church you go to? I don't really care. If I can help you, I will do that, and I need your support. And that's how I appeal whenever I am, uh, running my campaign. There's one observation, though, I would like to make. I know that this is one of the fastest areas, uh, in Pitt County as far as growth is concerned. One of the concerns, and you've probably heard it, too, that has been expressed to me by the Winterville citizens is that they would like to have the whole municipality of Winterville in one district. And I think what you're doing with expanding that area from Lower Ellis Road into Cooper Street is really, uh, taking more of the municipality of Winterville out of District Five. And I understand, but that's just something that we can think about.
And, and you are correct, that it is further dissecting the town of Winterville.
Yeah.
They get really good representation.
Right. Yes.
James, are you then at the state, uh, point in time with your presentation that you are open then for any commissioner that comes and wants to look at the overview that you've got in regard to streets and populations, and establish thereafter, uh, dates for the public viewing and public hearings?
Yes, sir, and I just need guidance if we want to have that dialogue between now and maybe the next meeting, and hopefully at the next meeting, we can set some public meeting dates. If, it appears tonight, there are some additional comments that need to be, uh, delivered.
What I want to make sure of is what we finally voted on is submitted to the Justice Department that wasn't done in 2000.
Tom?
We have an agreement here on this board, but the changes that we agreed upon, uh, voted on, were not submitted to, uh, Washington DC for their approval.
Look over that, Dave. What you got, Tom?
Uh, this might be a time in which I'm going to agree with Mr. James.
Thank you, Tom.
I, uh, I thought that we weren't going to make proposed changes unless absolutely necessary.
That's what I thought.
And I believe I heard Mr. James say that. And there's some proposed changes here that aren't absolutely necessary.
All right, that, that's in keeping with what I just said, Tom, and Dave, and Eugene. He's made a presentation here to you. You're to meet with him specifically. And I think that, uh, within the next timeframe before the next meeting is when you prefer that. Is that correct, James?
Absolutely.
And then he can come back from there with his recommendations based on meeting with, with specific commissioners.
He didn't listen to me before. I don't see no reason he's going to listen now. He's hard-headed.
Uh, Glenn?
My only question, uh, James, is as is, will it meet Justice Department standards as you propose?
Uh, according to Ms. Dagner, she believes that this is accept, would be acceptable by the Justice Department. Sure.
So, no problem. Part of what I've been doing in, in looking at this proposal is to try to ensure to the greatest extent possible that it will meet the no-retrogression analysis of the Justice Department, that it will be pre-cleared. Um, there's never any guarantee, obviously, but what I would hope to do is present the best, um, plan that meets. And where you've got such a large number of people that have to be added to District One, it's a challenge to do that and still maintain. But looking at the overall percentage of still maintaining over fifty percent and fifty-five percent minority voters or minority citizens in that district, and also, um, there's a very high percentage, uh, voting age population, minority population in District One. And as Mr. Rhodes said, looking at the actual voting, um, turnout for that district, and what I think, based on some of the questions tonight, we'll do is try to get even more detail about those areas that are moved and what the voting, uh, patterns were in, in those areas. But District Two is actually, has increased a little bit in minority, um, population for District Two. It was below fifty percent. The test for retrogression is looking at what the current plan is now and the percentages in the current plan now. So, um, yes, while we can't make any guarantees, it's, it's part of my job in advising, um, Mr. Rhodes and working with Janice Gallagher and, and trying to get all the information together is to establish that it will, um, still ensure that minority voters are able to elect candidates of their choice.
Uh, James, will you, in an overview that we just discussed, make an effort to meet with, uh, Mr. Hammond, Mr. James, Melvin, and Dr. Johnson to see that they're within the timeframe that we just alluded to?
Yes, sir.
And if there's any other commissioner, I don't believe they have asserted that, uh, desire at this time. Yes, sir, Doc?
When would this come back before this board again?
I would hope the July the 11th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. That it, James?
Yes, sir.
Now, we will move on with our agenda tonight. And I believe next, we've got the public address to the board. Do we have any people signed up for that, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, we have three people. Harry Till is the first person. If you'd come forward, please.
Come around, Mr. Till.
If I may just remind the board, as I do every meeting, that, uh, your speakers have three minutes to speak, and your policy, um, suggests that you not respond back at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Till is all ready.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate you coming to offer to...
Tell them who you are and where you live, Mr. Till.
I'm Harry Till, owner and operator of Till's Enterprise at 2686 Old River Road. I'm one of the longest-nated on Old River Road. Mr. Smith, appreciate this prayer and all. Carry you back to the first of the meeting. Okay, prayer when you say "our Father," that's plural. That's all of "our Father." Not your Father when it's good, our Father when it's bad. It's all time. When we say "pleasure leader to the flag, justice for all," not justice for the black, justice for everybody. I have got incident here that happened. I was so mad that I start tasting blood. I'm a veteran, lost my hearing in the military. Sunday morning, a friend of a veteran came to me. His property was in foreclosure. Going to be on the courthouse auctioning off of the courthouse step Wednesday. He come to me Sunday. My wife and I went down Tuesday and looked into it for him. And he's a twenty-year veteran. Each and every one of you took an oath. When you took that oath, it just like when you retire. It's just like, uh, Mr. Diddy Garrett, y'all honored him. When you take that oath, it's the same oath that the Boy Scout did and the military. That oath is so that we die. We supposed to cover one another back. I was in, in the Army, the Marine, the Navy, and all nationalities, uh, uniform, not the color of the uniform, but we was a servant to our country. My question and my suggestion to you, all of you today, we need to set aside a something, a disabled veteran or retiree, if they come down, waive the plan. This gentleman right here, Mr. Raymond, Mr. Raymond Daniel, wait. We took him up to the tax office in Walker. The year before last, he was disabled with a wheelchair. Wife died. He got married, the property was in his wife's name. They got together, why don't marry, put a trailer there, and it's not a home package. When he got disabled, he start selling yard sale stuff that was on his income. He had a mellow bill in there, and I got this receipt. He paid seven thousand off of this building. He had other police company trying to sell it to him. They went down to the tax office and told him what to try to do. They said, "You can't sell this building because it's taxed to the property." And they come told me about it. Someone helping your business, sir. I went down and asked Ms., uh, Ann. I said, "If you sell it Wednesday," which I'm going to this auction sale, "how long have you got before we can do anything about it?" Okay, now, he said, "Ten days before."
Mr. Till, we're on the three-minute deal. We've got us to...
Okay, ten minutes before. And what the deal was, I went down myself and paid this man tax and set him up on a plan. So, my thing is, River Road, they got, uh, seventy-six thousand dollars worth of value, worth of mobile home, that's the tax value. It's not a mobile home on River Road worth that kind of money. My suggestion is, Mr. Scott, some of your employee, after mobile home out, after depreciate, try to make some adjustment. So, my thing is, we need to do something about it. Now, you think about it, when the desert storm, Iraq, when these soldiers come home, what will happen to them? So, my thing is, look into it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
All right, you got somebody else?
Thank you, Mr. Till.
Brenda Harris.
All right, Ms. Harris.
I'm Brenda Harris at 1766 Stokes Elementary School Road. And it's Stokes, but my records with the tax office say Greenville. And my rent butler and Ashley Wilkes Court, they say Greenville. I mean, they say Stokes, and they're really Greenville. So, you have a problem in, in notices, but I can help, Mr. Till. And I'd like to play second shift and let him lead. This, I profiled every real property because I have error. I'm in tax foreclosure. Guess what, guys? There were two people here tonight that owe as much taxes and as far years back. I could call their name, but I don't want to embarrass them. I have some of that in the packages coming from Congressman Walter B. Jones. I came and I said, "How can I help this man before?" I knew he was involved. I went to see each one of those tax foreclosures. What happens is sixty percent of the foreclosures are Afro-American. We are moving back. Everything you said tonight was, "We want to be fair to the Afro-American." Obviously, I'm not the skin, but before God, he said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." And then he said, he said, "Love me with all your heart," but he said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." I have the mobile home industry profiled, and he's correct. If he were built correctly, like if I were built correctly, and every property that's on tax foreclosure and supposed to be sold, if I were built correctly, then I wouldn't owe any taxes. It took until this afternoon to get transaction histories, and Ms. Booker basically put it where she wanted it to go, but made sure it didn't hit any of the properties. See, here's your problem. There is a North Carolina Department of Revenue, and it says that there are criteria for a land home package. It does not mean, Rick, guys, it means that the title of the land and the title of, of, uh, the, the, uh, the mobile homes has to be the same. Most of the time, it isn't on River Road. I profiled the mobile home real property industry because I wanted our county manager to listen, and I wanted our county attorney to listen, because I believe it's important. If he had been valued, and it's seventy-nine thousand, if he had been valued based on real and personal, he might owe thirteen thousand in taxes, which would be less than a hundred and some dollars. But this is profiled by location, then it's profiled by owner, and by God, guys, it's profiled by year built. His is a two thousand double wide. See, each year, I can take you to this book, 1992. A 1992 cannot have Pete Byers and his three hundred and thirty-five dollars for a double wide, a code two, and then have Mr. Stewart, that's fifty-nine thousand, and we're talking about year built. We're not talking about land. When you profile a farm, you profile it on land, guys, because I am a profiler. That means that when I look at something, I'm not trying to make somebody guilty. But I will tell you this, that our records in the tax department are not just bad. I have something coming to you, Mr. Owens, and I'll cut it short. It says that Demetrius Smith, which was the heir of Mr. Smith for 1961, about six of them, owes nineteen...
Bring that on your next speech.
That nineteen thousand dollars...
Thank you, ma'am.
Is coming from, from the congressman. I hope you...
All right, who's next?
Next, we have Nancy Corville.
Come around, Ms. Nancy.
Good afternoon.
Evening, I think, now.
Lady.
Uh, I went to the, uh, my name is Nancy Corville, and my address is on file. I went to the, uh, meeting this afternoon with the ABC Board, and I have a couple of, of comments that I'd like to share. I do appreciate what they do, and you all were right in saying to them that they do a good job, because they do. But these are hard times for all of us, and, and that's no secret. I, I, I want to first support the ten cents increase per bottle of, of whatever. I think that's a good idea, and nobody will miss, will miss it. So, so having said that. But I do have a problem when someone made the remark that the employees were getting increased because, you know, they were subject to, to things that, that maybe caused, uh, dangerous to them. Well, you know, I want to say that there is plenty of danger on the jobs that the employees of the county and the city do. I mean, law enforcement, come on, and, and they're not getting raises. Uh, in 2009, uh, the ABC gave a three percent collar to their employees. In 2010, they gave a two-point-five percent collar. And in addition to that, a one percent performance whenever merit. Uh, in 2011, it was a two-point-five collar, and again, a two percent performance when merit. And, and I'm not begrudging this, and I'm sure that they deserve it, but they need to understand that we need to pull together. And our, and, and our employees in the county and the city and, and law enforcement are not getting anything, and they are working just as hard and exposed to, to as many people that are, may cause problem. Uh, I do want the county to hold them to their one point, uh, whatever, because we need the money, and if we don't get that money, where is it going to come from? It'll come from our phone balance. So, uh, you know, they need to make a commitment. I understand their concern about, uh, having a first-time budget, but they need to be team players. And I perceive downstairs that they are reluctant at this point to be team players. And I hope that they, uh, change their mind, because the county does need to know that they are going to have that money. Otherwise, where's it going to come from? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Manager?
Okay, item eight, item's report, manager's report, um, quickly, two items. One, next meeting dates, July the 11th. There'll be one meeting in the month of July due to the NACO National Conference. So, that meeting will be on July 9th at nine AM. Then we'll move back to, um, August. We'll have the first Monday at nine AM. Um, item B, acquisition of office space. As the board's aware, we've been, um, looking at options to provide office space to, um, Pitt County probation and parole, specifically those offices located at 214 South Pitt Street. Looked at a number of different options in terms of whether to acquire that facility, build space, lease space, um, and so forth. We have, um, now at this point, entered it into an offer to purchase for that facility at 214 South Pitt Street, and that has been accepted. And we're looking at closing on that property before July 31st. So, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I say...
Ready to vote? Item for decision, uh, school board's request on Third Street property.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on that one, the, um, school board has written us and are wanting the board's action. Basically, the statute says that if, once the school board is ready to dispose of a piece of property, they have to offer it to the county to see if we have any use or need for it. If we do not, then it is, that is communicated back to the school system.
Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the, the offer that the Board of Education has made to, to the Third Street's purpose, since they have declared a surplus and, and offered it as a donation to the county.
But it's, no, 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 Mr. Commissioner. They're, uh, they're basically...
I worked in.
They're, they're asking the county if we have any need for it. At this point, my recommendation would be we have no need or use for it.
That your motion, Dave?
What's that? What's that?
That we have no need for the property?
No, that was not its motion.
I asked him, did he want to that? You make a motion there.
Okay.
Dave's motion for the like of a second died. Ready now.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
All right. If we accept it, can we sell it and keep the money?
What you have to do, if the county has a need or use for it, we would have to pay a fair market value for it.
Oh, no, 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 we don't want to deal with that.
Technically, with the appraisal, the school system.
Make a motion. No, we'll deal with that.
The appraisal is a negative appraisal due to the structural needs and roof and.
All right, Ms. Warren.
I'd like to make a motion that the county has no interest in this property.
Second.
Direct the school board to take steps as outlined in the general statute for disposition of the property.
Been made, second, Melvin.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've received a lot of calls on this property, and these are from some people that have resided in this county for years. They do not want to see this property torn down or destroyed. It's a historical property, and that they want to see it made for some kind of, doing some type of community involvement or some sort. I personally, based upon the information that I've got, and I know this property, I mean, I'm familiar with this property very well, I really wouldn't want to see it torn down, destroyed. That's my personal thing. Now, if we're gonna give it back to the school board and say that we don't do anything about it, I think that at least, I think we have Mr. Calvin here. I guess you're here representing the school board, right?
Mr. Bealow.
Mr. Bealow, yeah. That he could maybe address these concerns, but, you know, I'm for one commissioner would never want to see it torn down.
All right, then.
That was not the motion, yes, sir.
Let the Board of Education, baby, we gave it to them, and we don't want it back.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. I believe that the school board has been very diligent in handling this matter, and I believe they have found that it would be too expensive to tear it down, and I vote in favor of the motion.
All right, anybody else want to discuss this? If not, let's vote.
What's the motion you made there?
To let the school board handle Third Street School.
Well, ain't they handling it when they offered to make a donation of the property to Russ?
They can't do that.
They have not. Basically, the statute says that once a school property is no longer needed by the system, they have to offer it to county government first to see if there's a need or use for it. If not, then you say no and turn it back to them for their, for them to dispose of it.
You ready to vote, Dave?
Yeah, I wanted us to accept it, but.
Wasn't anything except, Dave. Okay, let's go on. Appointment to.
You to vote.
No, I got to get the vote.
That's it, he votes. All right, that's number three.
Number three is voting delegate for the NACO Annual Conference.
Motion to appoint Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Second.
All right, let's vote. All right, Winnebago Planning and Zoning Board.
Motion to appoint Derek Allen to the Winnebago Planning and Zoning Board.
Any other nominations? If not, let's vote. All right, number four.
Mr. Harris to.
Yes, Ryan, you got that. Number four, reappointment to the Region Key Force Work.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Nettie Evans to another three-year term, to reappoint Susan Dudley to another three-year term. And it's noted that she has served a maximum number of terms, but this will be an exception.
All right.
Well, I want to point, we've gone against an exception with the Health Board on that, and I think, you know, one thing we talked about was expanding the amount of citizen participation by not granting exceptions.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I guess we'll vote on it, but.
I'm not.
Vote no if you don't like it. Ready?
Well, do you got to vote no against all of them? Well, that's what.
Now, that's the point.
As a note on that one, we probably don't have any other applications on file.
There's another one in the agenda. Mr. Webb fits within the same category.
But there's no one.
Yeah.
Who's applied for this position.
So, there's nobody to feel for.
That's right.
Ready to vote?
But there's somebody else.
Okay, now, the Animal Control Board.
Motion to reappoint those listed on page 64 of our agenda.
Any others?
Second.
If not, let's vote. All right, Greenville Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Allen's on the last one, if you would.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't do that, Billy. Trying to get out of it. There, thank you.
Motion to reappoint Linda Rich to the Greenville Board of Adjustments.
Any other motions for that? Not let's vote.
Okay, it's enough. We should treat it as enough.
Move reappoint the recommended person on number eight for farmer planning. That's one of those that they tried and couldn't get anybody else.
You got somebody, Mr. Calvin?
Yes, sir. Page 73, I give you his name.
Did you do number seven?
If you do, number seven.
You had two Greenville.
Greenville Planning and Zoning.
I'm sorry, I thought I was done with that.
That's okay, number seven.
All right, do we have a motion for number seven then?
I think that was the one you just did.
That's the one we just did.
I think we had something repeated twice in our agenda.
It's two different boards.
Yeah, one's Board of Adjustment for Greenville, the other is Greenville Planning and Zoning Commission. She's the same person, but two different boards.
Okay, reappoint Linda Rich to the Greenville Planning and Zoning Board. Now, we're down to number eight on the agenda.
And that's the airport.
After Mr. Hammond votes in this one.
No.
No, which one?
Number eight is the Farmer Planning and Zoning Board. That's the one where they tried to get people, and Paul Ellison Development Service Director over there has recommended a person who has already served his number of terms, but there's no other person in the interest. This man does a good job, and that's why I nominate him.
But Mr. Hammond hasn't voted on number seven yet.
Mr. Hammond's got to vote.
On number seven. Okay, now you're on.
All right, now, any other nominations? If not, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, I want to nominate John Banks and Linda Tripp to be on the Airport Authority.
Number nine first. Number nine first.
Got to do number nine first.
Pit Area Transit Board.
Pit Area Transit Board.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to.
Haven't got a motion.
First, you need to finish voting on number eight.
What, Madam Attorney?
I just need one more vote on number eight. Okay, now you're on number nine.
I second the motion, Mr. James.
All right, now, number nine. Did we have a motion on that?
Nine, yeah. Linda Tripp, John Banks.
No, that's 10, James.
That's 10.
This is Miss Claxton.
Jimmy, you got nine. Any others? If not, let's vote.
I cannot.
Now, Eugene James special.
Yes, I want to nominate Linda Tripp and John Banks.
The Airport Authority, right?
I need Mr. Hammond to go on number nine.
Don't vote, Dave. Just vote.
Right, I don't vote.
Are they ready for the vote on the last one?
Yeah.
They're two good people.
All right, now, we've had a request for a closed session. Madam Attorney?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board move into closed session.
Dave's got to vote again. All right, we just had a motion to withdraw the request for a closed session. Who seconds to withdraw that motion?
I second it.
All right, let's vote.
I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
Close session.
You're not gonna have it?
No.
I'm withdrawing my request.
What was the motion again?
I withdrew my request for a closed session.
I second it, too.
Vote no, Tom.
I'm gonna vote no.
Vote yes, Gene.
I voted, wait a minute, I'm voting no. What is it? I thought we, no, I'm voting for the motion.
Yeah.
I'm voting yes.
All right. Any other questions?
Who wants Keith Smith?
If not, we start with Glenn for Commissioner's comments.
Did you meet him?
Two things. One, looking forward to getting home. My 13th wedding anniversary, celebrated today. And the second thing, I just want to congratulate a young lady out of my district, Janelle Sargent. She's accepted a scholarship to the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill for gymnastics, and she's a homeschooler, and she'll be heading up there to represent Pitt County in the Fisher Dawes Prep.
Give her our regards.
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
No comment?
No comment.
No comment. All right, even. Melvin?
No comment.
Mr. James, you no comment?
No.
Dave?
Let's go home. Hey, George.
All right, we've got a motion. Who seconds it?
I second it.
Let's vote. Thank you.
My goodness, I wasn't supposed to talk.